Okay, well, we will call the Everett Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting to order. It's May twenty seventh. And I will do roll call. I am here. Vice Chair Andrews, Commissioner Burgess.
Here.
Commissioner Manziel. Commissioner Perez. I see him.
I am here and here and here.
Commissioner Trainer.
Present.
There's nothing like hearing George five times. And we know that. Chair Smith is not here today. That's why I am leading the meeting. So we will make. Time for a public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment? If so, you have two minutes. And welcome.
We can have you sit up.
Welcome.
This is kind of hard.
Oh goodness.
Oh goodness, right.
Not working.
If I can make a suggestion, the audio needs to be coming through the same laptop as the microphone.
Does this work? It's like echoing still a little bit.
But only once, I think, instead of five times.
Yeah.
No, it's still pretty bad.
Okay, so my thing was we're going to do, if we're going to. So hopefully everyone can hear us. Just drop the speed, just mute the speaker. Okay, so this is going to be the hot seat where the comment will happen.
It's still a really bad echo.
But we'll try our best to hear you.
Oh, actually, hold on, actually, hold on. We need that microphone to be the computer. Not be, it's still, it's still using the owl as the microphone. You guys left it to the microphone.
Well, that's better whatever happened there. Now we don't hear you at all.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. One more time.
I'm Sonya Bodge of the Delta Neighborhood Association. I'm currently just the treasurer now. But we've all been sort of worried about with the economic situation with the federal government and housing and urban development issues, how it's going with the Park District. You know, we were hoping by now that demolition or, you know, the beginnings of that was going to be started. But it seems to me that things are, have slowed down. And or, you know, been postponed and we're concerned that could this project be on the skids? And we're curious to know what an update is so we can pass that on to our, our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary.
I think.
Mary, will you address that now or in your report?
Mary's on her way to again the hot.
Oh. Hi, Mary. Hi.
So we have not stopped the Park District project. What we are looking at is segging it out into a couple different segments. The first piece would be to do the asbestos removal. So we're getting ready to go out to bid on the asbestos removal. The second phase would be the demolition itself. So if you recall, the asbestos removal is about a $2 million project. The reason why we're saying it that way is to keep the project going because we don't want to stop the project at this point. And but we also have a federal ask in for funding to help us with the demolition piece. And so if we move on the asbestos removal and we are successful in our funding in 2026, we can then follow up with the, with the actual demolition in 2026. So is, is the federal funding a piece of this that is causing us to pause? Yes, it is because we just don't know what is happening on the federal level. But we don't, we know that we're, it's good money to get the asbestos out because eventually it's going to have to come out anyhow. So that will raise the value. So that's the status of it right now. So Sonya, we're getting ready to go out to bid on the asbestos piece. So we're just taking the project, putting it in two separate pieces instead of one big piece. We actually talked about setting it out to bid and doing two, two different phases, but the pricing could change. And so we felt it was better just to go with the asbestos removal and then follow up with the, with the rest of it. When we know a little bit more about what's happening at the federal level and also what the funding, potential funding that we could get from the federal government on that project. So anytime you have asbestos in a building, there's a process to get it, to have it removed. And so we have to follow that process. Yeah, but when you have a building that has it in there, you have to go through a certain process to have it removed. You have to contain it so it doesn't go through the air and all of that.
Asbestos is safe so long as it's not airborne and asbestos is literally in everything.
Yes. Okay.
Do we have any?
Go ahead, Commissioner Andrews. I think you were going to ask any other public comment.
Yeah, any more comments?
Any additional public comment?
Okay. Great, thank you. Who will open it up? Anything from communications? Okay, then we'll move on forward to the executive director's report.
So I actually was going to report on the Park District, so I got kind of beat to the punch on that. But I, I think it is important to note that we are still kind of flying blind with what's happening at the federal level. I have an executive director retreat meeting coming up this Thursday. I'm hoping to hear a little bit more. It's the Awa meeting that happens quarterly. Not too sure what we're going to be hearing with it. HUD is being very silent about, about everything at this point. What we do know is what was just passed, Congress just passed is not, is not good for housing authorities. So the HUD funding is cut drastically. So we'll see where that ends up shaking out. So I don't have a lot of information on that, but be assured we are following that as, you know, as closely as we possibly can. We're working through the budget process and we have funding for the upcoming year that we're able to budget towards. But we'll see where the rest of it shakes out. The other thing is we had a sewer issue at the Colby office that has affected our bathrooms. And we had a, there was a problem with the backflow. So we're able to repair it, but we're going to end up being down without a bathroom for about a week. In the, we have to schedule it. The backflow valve malfunctioned, so we ended up taking the backflow valve out. But not, we need to replace it and to replace it's going to, going to take about a week. So we're looking at bringing in, bringing in some portable toilet facilities for that week. So it will be scheduled. Everybody will know. It was kind of an interesting time. We were walking to the Marriott for a day to use the restrooms. They were very kind and allowed us to use their facilities. But, and it was a nice day, so everybody got a good walk in. But we, if we're going to be down for that long, we need to have some kind of facilities here. That is all I have right now. Other than we are busy working on the budget. We have a workshop scheduled with the, with the board on June thirteenth. It's an afternoon at one o'clock. Location to be determined. I'm still working on location. And that will probably go, I would say about three, three or four hours. And we'll get, have a full update at the budget. So you'll have that prior to having to vote on it on the twenty third. And the twenty third is actually the day that our new finance director will be started. He's very happy he's going to start after the budget is complete. Is actually a pretty good process though. He is, he is meeting with me every week. He is also meeting with members of the finance team on a regular basis and is tapped in with the whole process. So he is getting up to speed before he gets here. As you recall, he is a USAID employee that's closing up shop in another country. So we're very excited to have him join us. And that's all I have.
Wonderful. Do we have any questions for, for Mary?
I do have one other, one other. It's, I believe all the board members are aware of this, but we have an employee that's going to be leaving us. And I'm very excited for him. Steve Iago has accepted a position with King County. And I, he didn't want to come to the meeting today, but I asked him if he would come so we could say wonderful things about him. Steve has been a wealth of knowledge for me. I'm really sorry to see him leave the agency. And I told him that anytime he wants to come back, he needs to just knock on our door. And if there's an opening, we will gladly find a place for him. So Steve, I, I know in my, I, I've talked to all of the commissioners about this. Steve has been just a wealth of knowledge. He, I can't say enough about the value he has added to me during my time here. So very sad for the agency, very happy for Steve. He is going to King County, not King County Housing Authority, but King County. And I'm going to let him tell you a little bit about, about the job that is so exciting for him. So now I need to move so he can come and sit in this seat.
Hi Commissioners. Thank you. Yeah, sorry to say, I really enjoyed working with everybody. You know, you're, the team is in really good hands with Kristen and Cal and, and everybody, everybody's excited for the transition too. So that works. So I'll be moving over to King County Housing Finance Program. I'll be running the interim loans for pre-development land acquisitions, also the credit enhancement. We're also gearing up for the Regional Workforce Housing Initiative. We're hoping that that gets passed for next year. So there's a lot of exciting things that's going on. I'm hopeful that, you know, the, the past couple of years working in, in development at the Housing Authority has really, you know, we really need to have a bigger feedback loop. And I think right now going to King County, looking at how they're structuring these things and communicate it back to our teams. And, and, and get it refined, get it done, get it done quicker, hopefully, you know, more cost effective. So that's, that's kind of the idea. So, you know, definitely want to make sure that the information gets passed to the team. But thank you for the opportunities to be here.
I just want to say thank you so much. You've been a consummate pro since the beginning, since I, I joined in 2019. Steve, you've been, you've, you've been a beacon of hope and a good, good dude. It's, you're going to be hard to replicate, man. And appreciate you for everything. And really just, just being there through all the, all the things that have happened over the last five years or so. Just, you're very good at what you do and you're well respected and sorry to see you leave, man. And really happy for you though, really happy for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
You guys are in really good hands. So, you know, have a good team.
That's good. Thank you so much, Steve. We do appreciate you and congratulations. King County's got a great one coming. So we really appreciate the work that you've done and yeah, don't be a stranger.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
All right. You be well.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, so let us move on to approve the minutes and we have two sets of minutes. I hope you all have read them from March twenty fourth and for our special meeting on April tenth. And are we able to approve both of those at the same time or do I need to do them separately?
Same time, yeah. Same time's fine.
Oh, awesome.
I'll make that motion.
Approve the minutes. Was that you, Chip?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
George second. That's George second and yeah, George second.
Great, all in favor.
All right.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. And let's approve the consent agenda. So we need a motion for the Section Eight payments and the summary of vouchers for March and April twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? There you go. Thank you. So we have items for individual consideration resolution number sixteen fifteen. And that is updating housing choice voucher. And who is speaking to that? Janina, is that you?
It'll be me and Melanie. So we'll join the hot seat together.
Okay, come, come to the house. Come on down.
So I'll just kind of kick things off and then I'll let Melanie kind of dive into the details a little bit. So our teams have been working really closely together on a pretty massive update to our housing choice voucher administrative plan, primarily to incorporate updates related to a few HUD regulatory changes that have come down in the past few years that are just going into effect this year. So one is that Housing Opportunities Through Modernization Act, which was passed by Congress in 2016. But due to, you know, federally bureaucracy, they're just now implementing some pretty significant pieces of it. There's a lot of changes to definitions. There's some changes to which different types of income sources are included or excluded. And so a lot of the updates in the admin plan are basically bringing us into conformance with HOPMA. Another major change is around INSPIRE, which is the new inspection standard. That stands for National Standards for the Physical Inspection of Real Estate. They love their acronyms and HUD. And so essentially it's the goal between, the goal behind INSPIRE, which is the new standard instead of HQS or Housing Quality Standards, was really to remove the subjectivity from the inspections because a lot of times there's inspector discretion. And so if two people inspected the same unit, you might come out with different outcomes for certain items. So HUD was really trying to give inspectors more specificity around what to look for. And then the other major, not as major policy update is around the Violence Against Women Act. And so that pertains to folks who are victims of domestic violence, dating violence, stalking or human trafficking. And so there's just a lot of numerous updates throughout the policy around the language that we use for that to incorporate the human trafficking as one of the groups of folks that's eligible for protections. We also made some updates to some of the exhibits in chapter sixteen because HUD just updated a bunch of our forms. There's some notices that were required to give to participants at different points in the process. We also have a plan. So if someone is a victim of one of those incidents, we have a plan that allows them to get assistance and, you know, hopefully move to a safer location. And then I will kick it off to Melanie to talk in a little bit more detail about how kind of the operational piece of the admin plan.
Okay, so yeah, so the changes to HOPMA specifically are changes to definitions for our income types and exclusions there. So we've gone through and we've done some training for staff through, through NAMIC, who we also use to update our admin plan to go over those changes. It will be effective July first, which are just a portion of the HOPMA rule because we can't apply all the changes yet based on the HIP that has not come out yet, which is the replacement for PIC so that we can submit our information to HUD. But that is not yet available for anyone. So they're breaking it down into phases. So we're doing that. We've also done a lot of the training around INSPIRE and the inspection changes for our staff. We've put information out on our website for our landlords. We did a newsletter for our owners as well to let them know of the changes that are going to be coming with those, with those inspection changes.
No, and then I'll just wrap up by saying we updated a lot of the chapters. We are planning to take some additional changes to the board in August to kind of get the rest of the chapters updated. So that will be fully caught up with all of the most recent versions of the NAMIC. They issue a model plan once or twice a year. And so a lot of the changes are pretty minor. So we focused on the really major ones this time, but we'll be bringing another update to the board in August. And then the plan is after that, we're hoping to get on a really good schedule of just bringing the updates every year as the new NAMIC template is updated.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? All right, thank you Melissa and Janina. And I need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Oppose? The motion passes to approve resolution sixteen fifteen. Thank you. Now we move on to resolution sixteen. Oh. Are we good? Okay.
This is the foster or the, the legal services contract or is that marrying?
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. I thought somebody was talking. Go ahead.
Oh, Mary's coming to present.
Okay, wonderful. I forgot about the movement.
Yeah.
I'll make room for movement.
So the next item on the agenda is a resolution. And I don't have it in front of me. Number sixteen sixteen approving a contract for legal, legal services exceeding $500,000. This is above my authority, so I, I need the board to approve that. Our legal services this year, for a variety of reasons, have exceeded my authority. So we need board approval for that.
Yeah, and so this one. Add on a little more. So this one is actually a new contract with a firm called Puckin and Redford. And they provide services to the Housing Authority around landlord tenant issues. And so because this is a, I believe it's a five-year contract, Erica, it's a five-year contract. So over the course of the five-year period, we're anticipating that it will be over the $500,000. So our procurement policy requires that the board approve any contracts that exceed $500,000. And so the resolution asks the board's authority to go ahead and sign that contract. This is a really important legal service for our property management team because it allows us to stay in compliance with landlord tenant law when we're enforcing the leases and keeping tenants safe, making sure we're collecting rents, et cetera.
And this is the contract with the new firm because with our prior attorney that dealt with this ended up retiring. So we had to go out and search for a new attorney to deal with.
Okay, okay.
That's right. So I will, yeah. I was just going to make the motion to approve.
Okay, I, I have one question though. Do we, do we, we do anticipate it going over 500,000 this year?
No, it's over a five-year period.
Over five years. Thank you. Got it.
We don't, we don't know for certain. So the way that they, the, the contract was attached to the resolution, but essentially it's like a fee-for-service model. So each type of action that they assist us with, there's a cost associated with that. It's really challenging to predict, but based on our projections, we believe it could go over that limit. And so just to make sure that we're in compliance, we wanted to go ahead and bring it to the board.
And this follows, yeah, this also follows the recommendations that came through the BDO audit.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. Okay, Chip.
Motion's been made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, resolution number sixteen sixteen passes. And now the approval of the financial statements for the quarter ending March thirty first, twenty twenty five. And Sandy, you're going to introduce that?
Yes, I am.
Are you seated already? That was, that was pretty good.
That was quick.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Yes, we did review it with the Budget Committee last week. So we went into some details and you have been provided the details, but I'm just going to summarize where we are today. And as, well, as of March thirty first anyway, not today, but we're in our four groupings, we are tracking well with budget. Our revenues are exceeding our budget expenditures, which is always good. We have a couple of things under the supporting programs. We do have administrative expenses are a little bit higher than expected. Those were due to the audit fees and some of the legal costs that were mentioned just a bit ago. But because we received some revenues for reimbursed some property expenses from last year, it's keeping us in track with budget currently. And, excuse me, under the core properties, we do have, our administrative expenses are showing a little bit higher than budgeted. But if you notice, our maintenance expenditures are below. So we are working with Gray Star Management of Huntington Park, who is, who is coding their maintenance expenditures to administration. So we're trying to change that so that puts more in line with the budget that those expenses are, should be at. And I think those are the main highlights I needed to point out to you. Also want to mention that we asked HUD for a change in our fiscal period. So we're changing from June thirtieth to a calendar year. So all our properties are in line with one calendar year. And we have been approved to do that. Yes, it's, we're very thankful. It is, we do have to do an eighteen-month process. So we, we are looking at how that works for us. And right now we're concentrating on doing a calendar year and then especially for budget and then looking at adjusting that in, in the future as we move along. We need to look at the budget every six months. in the future as we move along. We need to look at their budget every six months anyway. So this will be a good, good time to look at that. So we're very excited about that and it'll be nice. Once we get to January 2027, we will be 12, 12 months and that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations on that. I, I know that's going to be easier for everyone.
Yeah, the work, the work you, you all put, put into that is fantastic. And the way it was explained was even more fantastic. So thank you so much.
That was the, the smaller of the work.
It was great.
So, so good to get over that milestone, but we have the next one to come, but that's going to, um, we have a team that's willing, you know, everybody's looking, really looking forward to moving it to the calendar year. So I think it will be a good team effort to get us there.
Good. One step at a time.
Yes.
Thank you Sandy.
Can I entertain a motion? To approve the financial statement report?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Dragon.
George is seconding.
George.
George F E L. Aye.
I'm going to do that one more time. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh yeah, I can't hear George at all. So the motion passes and that is all we have for today. Our next meeting is June 23rd. And then Mary, you said we have the meeting on the 13th? The budget meeting on the 13th? And that is in person? Great. So.
Really quick. Vice President Andrews, Mary's hopping in the hot seat.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, um, it is on the 13th and I'm going to hold you all to it because y'all committed to me that you were going to be in person. So.
I'll be there. I'll be there.
Okay. Calendar and I'll change whatever I need to change.
Yeah, we're actually excited to get, to get you all in one place so we can step through the different departments and the budgets. There's been a lot of work to get it, get this budget into a really good, nice working document for the departments. So we're pretty excited to share that with you.
Excellent. Thank you all for all the hard work that you do every day. We don't see you often, but just want to say thank you. And we'll, then we'll see you, most of you on the 13th then. Is that what we're hearing, Mary?
Yes.
Nice. I have to say this. Okay, just real quick. I know we had the Housing Hope Gala. And it was so nice to be able to sit with our team members, our staff and have conversation. And so that was really lovely and I appreciate that. So it's nice to see folks in a different light than on these boxes.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Now, um, call for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Great, thank you everyone.
Thanks everyone.
See you guys. Bye everybody.